Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the Rockville Center Board of Education on April 18th. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please note there are emergency evacuation exits on the other side in the back. We have a lot of fun visitors here tonight. Mr. Gavin, I'll turn it right over to you.
Well, thank you. We are so happy today to welcome our music and art students for recognition. We are proud to welcome and celebrate their accomplishments. Pablo Picasso just once wrote that every child is an artist, and that means they are creative, and we celebrate their creativity today. And I'd like to introduce Dr. Zouar to introduce all of our students.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and I want to thank our Board of Education and our district admin for your constant support through the years and continued support that make these honors possible. Here in Rockville Center, our arts teachers are leading our students to make connections between art and biology, engineering, design, physics, literature, computer technology, music, drama, film, history, and all manner of other disciplines. Because of their involvement in the arts, these kids look at the world in fresh and innovative ways. They solve problems creatively. They work in teams or independently, but most importantly, they become thoughtful, caring, and sensitive human beings. Evidence of this is the way they behave at all of the all festivals, all state, all county, all eastern. I've watched them in rehearsals and performances, and I watched them preparing their artwork, and I observed that they are courteous, thoughtful, and good team players. Most of all, while they excel at a high level of skill, they love what they're doing, and they love it for the sheer beauty of the art and for the joy that comes from creating the art. So with that, we'll begin recognizing our all-state, all-eastern, and all-national music students. So in December of 2022, up in Rochester, the following students were at the All-State Conference in Rochester, New York, Toby Dwyer and Ally Pilaro. Just last week, we're all going to stay here and have one picture. So just last week, April 13th to 16th, also in Rochester, Toby was also in the all-eastern, so the whole east coast of the United States Conference, also in Rochester. Back in February, in Cincinnati, Ohio, the American Coral Directors Association had their national conference, and Sarah Berusso was an all-national honors ensemble student. I think some of them are still with the Drama Club on their trip. And also Elizabeth Coles, Isabella, I'm sorry, Isabella Coles was with her. I think she's also away with the Drama Club. And at the all-eastern honors choir, back in November, at the National Harbor in Maryland, close to Washington DC, Isabella Coles represented us at the National Association for Music Education's National Honors Choir. So Isabella Coles, Sarah Berusso, Toby Dwyer, and Ally Pilaro. Are you in the all-county too, Ally?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Back in January, many of our students made us very proud at the all-county music festivals, and the concerts were held at the Tillis Center, part of CW post-campus. So the following elementary music students represented us at all-county. We'll do all the elementary kids first. Sophia Albarano, Ava Arias, Christian Barton, Yadeliz Bizono, Eric Duran, Dylan Endy, Henry Gominiak, Anders Hoffman, Amelia Karain, Shannon Leahy, Cooper Musa, Miles Musa, Ryder Nakari, Volkan Nas, Riannon Owens, Allison Shelley, Kimberly Tamaris Pintado, Adris Trujillo, Sophia Turk, and Benjamin Yin are all-county elementary. Brigino, Harper Falavini, Henry Galley, Leith Jamal, Danielle Lu, Catherine Mamarale, Valentina Marquart, Joseph Muir Jr., and Cameron Rhodes, our middle school. Our high school all-county students, Paul Adal, Daniela Agrandizo, Ryan Berusso, Sarah Berusso, Amalia Breen, Julia Coles, Emerson Cornell, Kira DeLuca, Sophia DiMarco, Crew Durant, Toby Dwyer, Lauren Ferazani, Catherine Grassi, Leanna McCarthy, Caitlin O'Toole, Ally Pilaro, Connor Riley, and Donovan Sherwood. Back in February, we had the following strings students participate in the Long Island String Festival concerts at Uniondale High School, February 3 through 5, and they are Paul Adal, Emerson Cornell of our high school, Leith Jamal and Danielle Lu of our middle school, Now moving on to our art students, the following students had their work represented in the Nassau County All-County Art Exhibit that ran at Long Beach High School on Sunday, March 19th. And I want to thank our teachers also, who went to set up the work and to collect the work, Mr. Gamash, and was it Mrs. Broder that brought it there?
Ms. Albrody, from the middle school, Cadence Albrody.
So our teachers also participated, and I thank them. The elementary all-county art students are Sylvia Chen, Miles Musa, Fiona Schaefer. Our middle school art students were Isabella Amador, Sky Corthen, and Patrick Lamparello IV. And our high school all-county art students were Joseph Blanco, Christian Chan, Grace And before I conclude with the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, just a reminder that this year, 2223, was the first year that we had all-county music ensembles in about three years, and even the all-county art has been virtual in the past couple of years. You know, you would be able to click on it on a computer screen, but it was in-person this year. So we're very happy to be getting back into the swing of live and in-person performance. So the following students were recognized for their Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. Alana Cassiano got an honorable mention, Erica Flaherty an honorable mention, Kayla Katz a silver key, Elena Mingarance got a silver key, a gold key, and two honorable mentions. Natalia Skrotzki got honorable mention and a silver key. I'm sorry, she got three honorable mentions and a silver key. And Madeline Trenneman got an honorable mention. Those are our Scholastic Art and Writing. So thank you once again for all your support of the programs. We have our high school show going up in a week, our middle school show in about two or three weeks, and concert season begins, and look for all of our students' artwork hanging in the Rockville Center Public Library for the entire month of May. So thank you all again for all your support.
Okay. I think we are ready for superintendent's report.
Any correspondence that can be posted has been posted. Opportunity for students. I think they all just left. Superintendent's report, Mr. Gavin.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a few reminders, since our last board meeting, we really haven't had that many overall school days. So I want to remind everyone that New York State ELA assessments begin this week. The middle school will be beginning tomorrow, April 19th and 20th. Tomorrow and testing days are a normal school day with shortened periods to accommodate for testing. Students that are not testing are expected to be in school at regular time. The elementaries commence on April 24th and 25th. This year, New York State mandated that by the end of next year, all schools use computer-based testing. Rockville Center is well-prepared for this initiative. We are doing it this year. The students have practiced, the teachers have practiced, the administrators have practiced, and our principals tell me at our meeting today that we are well-capable of doing this. So we are excited to get moving on that. I also want to announce that we are changing a policy on Regents Review. We are changing our policy about the payments for evening classes for Regents Review. We agree that from now on, the classes should be free, and we will need to monitor students' attendance. Any parents that have paid thus far will be reimbursed. Dr. Moriarty is working on a letter with Mr. Di Ambrosio that will send out tomorrow to inform the parents of the process. So there's a change for that on Regents Review. And I think we're ready for our budget hearing.
Okay, at this point, we will start our preliminary budget hearing. Mr. Gavin.
I'd like to introduce Mr. Bartels to walk us through our presentation for the evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. So tonight, for our preliminary budget hearing, I want to walk everybody through kind of what we're going to be doing tonight as far as an agenda. We're going to, once again, review where we are in the budget schedule. Took about a few key points and takeaways from the 2324 budget. I want to show some history of our budgets here in Rockville Center, similar to previous presentation I've done, as well as the financial health of the district. Talk about the tax impact and how this budget's going to impact the homeowners, and finally some summary information about the budget vote. So as we come towards the end of our budget schedule, tonight is the preliminary budget hearing, which is the last chance we have to make any changes to the budget before the board adopts the budget. On May 3rd, we will have a formal budget hearing, which is required by the state, but at that time, we cannot make any changes. And then on May 16th, we have our annual election and budget vote. So we are still at a budget of 5.74% for next year, which includes a tax levy of 1.99%. This is under our tax cap, which is 2.21% this year. As I've talked about, it's a formula that we have to go through to determine the tax cap. It's not always that 2% number that many times you hear in the paper, but it's done by a formula, so we are well-under that this year. The Long Island average for tax increases is approximately 2.21%, based on an article that Newsday had provided a couple of weeks ago. We are going to be using $2.5 million from our undesignated fund balance for next year for capital projects. So we've been doing about $1.8 million in capital projects for the last few years. We're going to be doing $4.3 million for next year, which is one of the reasons the budget increase is a little higher than it normally would be. But we're funding that through using some of our reserves that we've been able to build up over the last couple of years. The reason for those big increases are we're trying to address a couple of projects that we really need to take care of. We've had a number of issues with leaks at the middle school, so we really need to replace the roof at the middle school. So we have that project in there, as well as putting in a turf field at the middle school. Every time it rains, we run into issues, canceling games, we are not able to use it for phys-ed. We just need to get more access to that field. So those are two major projects, which I think are sorely needed here in Rockville Along with those capital projects, we are doing other, smaller work in all of our buildings. So in every one of our school buildings, we have work, floors being done, ceilings being done, bathroom upgrades, and so forth. We have, by the way, we have a listing of all of these capital projects on our website, along with a copy of the budget. All of our presentations and budget brochure are all on the district website, and I believe there are some budget brochures outside. For next year, again, we are happy to say that we're not looking at any program cuts for next year, any changes in staffing, or would be due to enrollment shifts and enrollment changes. We are expanding offerings in our schools, both in-school and after-school, with clubs and sports teams. So we're adding another team at the high school, boys JV volleyball, and we're adding five teams at the middle school, boys and girls winter track, boys volleyball at the middle school, and girls cheerleading in both the fall and the winter seasons. We also have in this budget additional support for DECA, which is our business program, coding, robotics, K-12, and new laser engravers. We are continuing to maintain all of our staffing and support programs that we put in place during COVID. We were able to get additional funding from the federal government to provide additional after-school programs, call the Wizards Program, also with Regents Review, and some of our other support staffing, academic support. We had an additional social worker we were able to fund with federal funds. All those programs, we plan on continuing next year, and they are in the regular budget for next year, so we are not going to be closing any of those programs for next year. We will be expanding the Integrated Co-teaching Program, which was a great success at the elementary school this year. We're going to be moving that to all of the secondary level for next year. Also, as we talked about at the last meeting, we have an additional increase for security. We made some changes, some shifts in our budget, added a couple hundred thousand dollars more to increase our security presence at all of our buildings for after-school and evening events, as well as looking to support additional security measures throughout the Those changes that we made, again, at the last meeting, presentation is on the website, but we added some funding for some additional special ed tuition costs, as well as this additional security. They were offset by other reductions in the budget, so the budget itself stayed at that So when we look at our budget history, this is the last 10 years, budgets have been running somewhere around 3% on average, with tax levies significantly lower. They've been about 1.5% for the last 10 years, and that includes in the 2122 school year, where we actually were able to keep the levy flat, so we had no increase in that particular year. You'll see for next year, that budget number goes up. However, the budget would be about 3.8% had we not put that additional funding in for the capital projects and not used that one-time source. So that line would have normally come down just a little bit for next year, so I just wanted to make that point, make that clear. And this is kind of the reason we can do that, use that one-time funding. Our financial health, again, over the last 10 years, we've been running fairly stable in what our fund balances have been over the last three or four years. We've been able to increase those due to COVID, which we've had some reduced expenditures, but we've also had some additional funding from the state and federal levels. So we're able to build up our reserves over the last few years, and we think we need to use that for those capital projects. We need to use it for a one-time use because this is kind of one-time funding. We can't really use it for staffing or for ongoing programs because that would require an annual commitment. By doing it for capital projects, we can use it for the one-time and reduce the number, and even with that reduction, the amount we're planning on using, we should still end up with more money in fund balance than we've had historically before COVID. So where does this hit the homeowner? It's very difficult to kind of project what the tax increases are for the homeowner at this point in time. What we try to do is use the average taxpayer in Rockville Center, but every year, there are some that are going to be higher, some that are going to be lower than the averages. Basically, what happens is we start with the tax levy, that's the start of the calculation, and it's the only figure that the school district controls. The county assessor then takes the tax levy and divides it over four classes of taxpayer. They use something called adjusted base proportions. And that basically takes, of the tax levy, about 75% of the tax levy is borne by the homeowners. You also have apartments, utilities, and businesses, which make up another 25% of the overall budget, of the overall taxes. The apartments account for 7%, utilities 2%, and businesses about 16%. So after that 75% portion of the tax levy is distributed to the homeowners, that then total amount is then divided over the total assessment base of the Class 1 homeowners to come up with a tax rate. That number will change from year to year based on what the assessments happen year to year. It's been extremely confusing trying to follow this because we've had this whole reassessment a number of years ago, and there have been limited increases for some families who had large increases in their assessments. They were spread out over five years. So while some people are staying relatively stable, others are seeing increases. And then to further confuse the matter, the county has frozen the assessments. So while some are increasing, others are freezing. It just makes it very difficult to kind of calculate that until we get the final assessments. We don't get the final assessments until the fall. For the last two years, we've gotten them not until October. So next year is going to already started, we still won't have our final assessment numbers. So that's why it's really difficult. So the numbers we kind of look at is based on where we are now, expecting not too many shifts. So based on preliminary information that we have, the average assessment at Rockville Center is increasing from an assessment of 560 to 602. That's an assessment figure that translates roughly to about a $560,000 home to a $602,000 home, or a 7.5% increase in your assessment. So if you are an average home in Rockville Center, somewhere around those numbers, and your assessment went up 7.5%, you would see an approximate increase of $260 in your taxes. And that would equate to about 1.95%, which is a little less than what the tax levy is increasing. Again, I just have to warn everybody, it's a very preliminary number at this point, and there are many factors that change this, that are not controlled by Rockville Center. The county assessor will direct anybody that calls, probably to me. They did that even when we had a flat tax levy, and the levy didn't change at all from 2021 to 2122. People called the assessor to ask why their taxes changed, they referred them to the school district. We didn't change our tax levy, nothing should have changed. So it's very difficult to try to project that number, but that's the number we're looking at, is about $260, very rough average of how the taxes will impact everybody. And that brings us to the budget vote, which is Tuesday, May 16th. It's from 7:00 in the morning to 9:00 PM here at Southside High School in the main gymnasium. There will also be a board of trustee election. We have two seats that will be filled at large. I've had questions about registration. People can still register, they can do so at the district office here on Shepherd Street up until May 11th. Absentee ballots may be used, but they must be received by the district clerk by 5:00 on Tuesday, May 16th. Also on the ballot will be the Rockville Center Public Library budget, and one public library board seat will be filled as well. That's my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board?
First of all, thank you so much for all the work you did. I think it always helps at this junction to just explain to the community what happens if the budget doesn't pass. And I think this year, just that clarification on, because we're taking the money from reserves, that would happen regardless of the budget passing. But moving forward, our budget increase will be based off of the money without that $2.5 million. I just think that that clarification is important for people to understand what happens this year and next year, and also what happens if the budget doesn't pass.
Yeah, if the budget goes down, we are not allowed to add additional tax money for any capital projects, which means all those new capital projects that are not funded with that extra money from the reserve would not be able to happen. But we do have enough money in there for those two projects at the middle school, so that is a good thing. The only other thing that really is impacted in a failed budget, again, where we're not allowed to increase the tax levy, is we're also not allowed to open the buildings, which would incur any expense for the use of the community, which is, you know, it's a tough penalty. Unfortunately, it's something that's required by the state. So should the budget go down, we cannot open the doors when we will incur any costs for that.
Thank you.
Are there any ramifications in terms of the state budget being delayed on our planning?
No, I don't foresee any issues with the state budget. The issues within the state budget don't seem to be revolving around state aid. Those, I think the governor and legislature is fairly consistent on what those numbers are going to be in terms of the overall state aid.
I think the one issue was how we can use that number. So they're still talking about how they can use some of the increase in foundation aid. That was something, the money, the actual amount is really not, doesn't seem to be the issue. It's other larger issues, and one of the pieces- and one of the pieces that's going to be decided in that is because the one-house budget and the governor's budget differ on how you can use a portion of your increase in foundation aid.
Right. So we would have, yeah, that one little codicil in there is, we would have to take, we're getting an increase of about $3 million in foundation aid, we would have to take $350,000 and target it directly to grades 3 to 8, math and reading specifically. So we would have to, you know, develop a plan to exactly how we're going to spend that particular
That was in the governor's. The one-house budget didn't have that restriction. So that's, I think that's one of the things that, I don't think it's holding up the budget per se, but it's one of the things that we don't have a good read on, at least at this point.
Right. And that's a piece of a number, but it shouldn't affect the total number that comes to the district from the state.
At this point, we haven't heard anything about, they're arguing on the number for state aid for districts. But it's still, it's not done until it's done.
So once that gets finalized, we'll update everyone here as appropriate.
Correct.
Yep. Okay. At this time, we will open up the mic for visitors just on the proposed 2023-2024 budget. Please come over to this one, this one?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
We know one people.
Okay, sure.
Good evening, everyone. Jeff Greiffield, citizen taxpayer. Out of fear, five-ubercord, of getting shut down with the three-minute rule, I know you're very strict on me, more than other speakers. It's not Passover, but I'll give you my four questions first, and then wait for the answers, and hope I get answers tonight. The details of the $4.3 million capital, I know you just said it's online. You originally disclosed two projects, the roof and the track, but now that's more than 4.3. So could you give us some details? Next, there are six new sports teams. How much are one-time expense, and how much will be the annual expense of these teams? I don't see that disclosed anywhere in the budget that I received. And by the way, what are those teams? Not that I'm against it or anything, but I think it's good for public information. Now, you detailed the average cost of the home in Rockville Center. I just wish that I knew people in those average costs that you used. But what concerns me more, which isn't disclosed, is how much is our liability with respect to the IDA giving away our money with, and was there any new IDA money given away this past year on the former diocese building by way of tax relief, you know, on that building at, what, Park and Sunrise? Mm-hmm. Contract settlement. I heard that we settled a contract with the supervisors' union, or the principals and assisted. What was the percentage of that? How many years? I never caught it in any meetings, probably in some consent agenda. And what other contracts are pending, and what's the expiration date of those contracts, such as the teachers' union? Those are my four questions.
Okay.
If I'm under three minutes, I'll use it after.
All right. Do you want me to go?
Yep.
All right, good. So to start with the contracts, so the admin contract, the average increase op for the four-year duration of the contract was 2.06 in terms of average percent increase on salary. We have, in terms of contracts, we also have the teachers' union, which we are in negotiations with. That contract has not expired. That expires at the end of June this year, but we feel cautiously optimistic that we'll come to an agreement. We also settled an aid contract this year with our teacher aides to add about a dollar an hour. That's the real, the big giveaway, about a dollar an hour per year for our teacher aides. We are having difficulty finding teacher aides for the original salary, which is why we made that agreement with them. And we've been cautiously optimistic that we've been able to hire some more people as those spots become vacant. In terms of the sports, I think Mr. Bartels detailed the sports there. One, JV boys volleyball here at the high school. Then we have girls cheerleading at the middle school, both in the fall and the winter, so that's counting as two. Then we also have boys and girls winter track. So boys and girls winter track, so that, am I missing one? Did I forget one?
Boys volleyball.
Boys volleyball at the middle school, sorry, boys volleyball at the middle school as well. So those are the sports that we have. The costs, I think, are detailed in the budget, Robert?
Right.
It doesn't break out the cost of the new sports?
Right, yeah. It doesn't bring them out separately. The costs for, the one-time costs are within the supply costs of Ms. Rosetta's budget, which is blended in in a fairly large
Approximate, how much?
Probably 15,000, 20,000 total. It's not large. The ongoing costs are a little bit more. They're probably going to be 15,000 to 20,000 each for each team, depending on how much transportation is involved and
And coaches.
different coaches.
Coaches and transportation.
Right.
In terms of, you wanted to talk about the IDA on the property. Robert, do you have any information on that one?
Yeah, we understand we are going to be getting something from them, but we don't have anything yet firm from the assessor's office. I'm not sure everything, if everything's been fully approved at this point in time. We are expecting to get some funding from them, but as of this point, we're not going to be getting it next year.
Well, we don't know what the amount is, or what was agreed to. They only like to have hearings at the Tannhamstead IDA during holiday weeks.
Yeah. We do not have a schedule of payments yet, no.
Do we, did we have some standing and some say at that? No.
No, we were invited. Do we have some say? We rarely have say. We've tried this in the past. We've gone with our attorneys, voiced our opinions, and had very little impact.
And then your other question were the details for the projects?
Yeah, the capital. It's grown to 4.3 million.
So what we have are the two, the two costs for the roof and the field, that comes out of reserves. Robert, if you want to go over those. And then the other building costs in terms of capital were all detailed in last week's, or last meeting's presentation, where we talked about the, all the upgrades at each of the different buildings.
The locker rooms is a new one. How much are we spending on locker rooms?
Locker rooms are about 30,000.
Oh, okay.
That's for the additional lockers for the locker rooms.
Our own guys did, our own guys downstairs did the reconfiguration.
Did a lot of the work ourselves.
They did, like, they moved some walls around and stuff like that, and then we put the lockers in.
Okay. And the roof, did we bid that already? I saw people working on the roof.
Yes.
And what did the bid come in?
The bid came in at 1.7.
Yep.
Was that below what we estimated, or above?
Yes, below.
Good.
We thought initially it was going to be about 2.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Down in Florida, it would be a lot more money, I understand. And assured it's a roofing materials. And what about the track, the field?
The track was about 1.8.
Well, the track and the field.
Field, yeah.
Track and the field, yeah.
And the field. And did we get that off the county contract?
Yes.
Okay, that's the right way to go.
Landtech is doing it, yeah.
Landtech is the leader in it. And if you go off the county contract, you save money.
Yep, yep.
Thank you for answering my questions so far. I'll get back to you if I have more to lay today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come up to the mic regarding the budget? Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. May I have a motion to accept the proposed budget for the 2023-2024 school year to be presented to the voters of the Rockville Center Union Free School District on May 16th, 2023, in the amount of $136,456,493.57?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call. Mrs. Messier?
Yes.
Mrs. Farazani?
Yes.
Mrs. Hackett?
Yes.
Dr. Downing?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt the property tax report card.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Items for information, Mr. Gavin?
Thank you, Madam President. We have a number of wonderful presenters here tonight to talk about the K-12 scope and sequence for computer science, coding, and computer design. This was one of our board goals that we originally presented on in the fall as an area where, you know, coming together with the board, and coming together with our teachers and the faculty at large, we saw this was an area where we could develop some new things. So we are very excited that we formed a very large triple-headed committee that broke up into three smaller committees. And I will introduce Dr. Moriarty to introduce the team presenting here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you to the board for asking us to come back and present. I really can't believe that it's already the spring, and that this is our recap of everything that we've done this year so far. It doesn't seem possible that we're already here. So it is my pleasure to introduce an outstanding group of brilliant teachers and administrators who are truly committed to providing a top-rated educational experience in computer science, robotics, and computer-assisted design. We believe that these fields are critical in preparing our students to success in the 21st century, and we are excited to share our vision with you this evening. Our team, which is represented here by several of our committee members, is dedicated to creating learning environments across our seven buildings that fosters creativity, innovation, and collaboration. We recognize the importance of providing students with hands-on experiences that allow them to explore and experiment with the latest technologies, while also developing essential problem-solving and critical thinking skills. We are really, truly passionate about ensuring that all of our students have access to the tools, the resources, and support that they need to succeed in these exciting and rapidly evolving fields. They're rapidly evolving even as we stand here tonight, talking to you about what we're going to present. Whether you are a student, a parent, or a community member, we invite you to join us on the journey as we work together to empower the next generation of leaders in computer science, robotics, and computer-assisted design. Thank you for your time and your attention. And without any further ado, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Walsh, Mr. Duffy, Mr. Zapia, Mr. Gamash, Mr. Beinlick, Mr. Lamanna. And in the audience with us as well tonight is Mrs. Lasorsa, who's along with us with the journey. And they are just a mere sampling of our other committee members who worked all year long to ensure that we are providing the best experience that we can possibly
Thank you, Dr. Moriarty. And I just wanted to start by thanking the Board of Education and Central Administration for allowing us to speak tonight regarding the work that the Computer Science Robotics and Computer-Assisted Design Committee have been working on. We're really excited to share with you the planning and the implementation that has been occurring so far this year. The computer science field is one of the fastest-growing fields out there, and it's our job to make sure our students will have the opportunities to be at the forefront of this movement. It's something that's been driving our work, and we're really excited about it. I think tonight you'll notice a common theme that we've been working on throughout this, our work together, which is to create this common vertical alignment from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade, to make sure that there's cohesion and unity in terms of what kids that come through this school district are learning in this particular area. So as the high school principal, that makes me really excited knowing that our students are going to be coming to us, are going to have this great foundation and cohesiveness in their experience in this area. It also means that as a high school team, we have to be prepared to make sure that we have a sequence available for our students that gives them a four-year option to pursue this great field. So it's really exciting work, and we're very much looking forward to what's ahead. And I'm hopeful tonight that you'll see some of the work that we've been putting forth, because we're really excited to share it. Computer science is such an important field. It helps students develop skills in algorithmic thinking, problem-solving, critical thinking, logical reasoning. These are all wonderful skills that will help students, not just in computer science, but in really all of their academic subjects. So it's really a worthwhile pursuit for us to work towards.
There we go.
Thank you, Ms. Celebrati. So what you'll see on the screen right now, we figured we would start just by with introducing an artificial intelligence model called ChatGPT. So as you'll see on the screen, we put in a prompt there that what jobs or careers will be available for students in this field in the next 10 to 15 years. And what ChatGPT is, is an artificial intelligence tool that takes prompts from users and generates unique, detailed, thorough responses. Based on how the user prompts it, the AI model can generate sophisticated responses to elaborate questions. This was something our high school staff was very much interested in as this started to become popular and in the mainstream. Back in February and March, I asked for volunteers of the high school staff to meet after-school to create an artificial intelligence task force, is what we called it. I picked that name because it really sounded cool and exciting. We were, our goal was to discuss ways in which ChatGPT will impact us as educators at the high school level, knowing that the artificial intelligence movement is only increasing at such a rapid pace, and we want it to be as prepared as possible as a faculty. So we met, we looked at ways that this was going to change the way we teach kids, the way we assess students. We also wanted to look at ways that this tool might enhance that which we already do. So it was great, it was a great opportunity. About eight to 10 high school staff got together over a number of afternoons, and we presented at our April faculty meeting to the entire high school faculty. My goal was to make sure that the high school was at the proactive front edge of this newfound technology, and really set the message that we're always continuous learners as educators here at the high school. So this is just a sampling of where computer science and this field is headed, and it's been amazing to see this evolution. And it really just underscores the importance of the work that this committee has put forth to make sure that our students are ready for a world in where this is really the norm. So very much look forward to the rest of the presentation. I'm going to introduce Mr. Jim Duffy now, the principal at Wilson, and I look forward to sharing the rest of the presentation with you all.
So as Dr. Walsh stated, it's an ever-changing world that we live in, and one of our major goals this year was preparing our students for the future. And with that in mind, we took a look at all of our technology programs, K to 12, and we broke into these three major topics of computer-assisted design, computer science, and robotics. And they're not done in a vacuum. There's a lot of overlap between them. They build on each other. We have a strong foundation here to begin with, and we started evaluating our resources of the things that we already had in place, and looked for opportunities to make some improvements. So we formed a large committee that broke into several small committees. It comprised of teachers from all seven buildings, administration. And we started to ask questions, like what resources did we have already, what programs were we already using, what classes were already being offered, what were some of the strengths that we had, and what were some opportunities for improvement that we could look forward to for growth. When we met, we evaluated all these things, and we wanted to create a systematic approach that build upon each other, starting in kindergarten all the way up to 12th grade, and give all of our students at all the schools opportunities to thrive. Part of the strong foundation that we had came from the Ed Foundation and the Teacher Center. Over the years, we've gotten many, many grants for enrichment-type things. For, if we look at the slideshow there, we have cublets, little bits, incubators, all sorts of new technology pieces that were brought into our school system to lay this foundation for technology. And then we wanted to build upon the things that we had that were working well, and look to grow in some other areas More pictures of grants that we got. Those are Vex Robotics there. On the page before, we saw incubators. So we've gotten a lot of great things from the Ed Foundation and from the Teacher Center.
Mr. Duffy, if I may too, I just wanted to share, the high school student in the top right there is one of our science research students, and this was a shaking incubator, which was purchased from the Ed Foundation, a very generous grant that the Ed Foundation gave to science research last year, to really bolster some of the equipment and the products that we have in our science research lab. So her project that she was working on, so just bear with me on this one, she examined how melanized and non-melanized keratin filaments are digested differently by the feather-degrading bacterium using the shaking incubator. And shaking incubators are designed to simultaneously incubate and shake or agitate samples, and they're ideal for cell culture, cell aeration, and solubility experiments.
I was going to say that.
There will be a quiz on that topic right after this.
Not only in our K to 12 classes, but also in some enrichment things that we've done in the past. The summer school has gotten grants, things like battle bots, underwater robotics, some very fun, exciting things that we were able to bring enrichment opportunities to students K to 12, even outside the regular school day. We decided to use a backward design approach. So one of the first things So one of the first things we decided to do was start at the top. And where did we want our graduating seniors to end up? What skills would they have? What classes would they take? And then work our way backwards. So if we knew what the ninth graders needed, then we knew where the eighth graders needed to end. Then we knew where the fifth graders needed to get. Then we worked all the way down to what would a kindergartner need to learn and what skills would they need to progressively work towards our goals of the seniors. So the backwards planning model we used as a guide, the outcomes were decided. And then we're able to plan backwards to create learning pathways at every grade level. So here, we're starting with computer science. And you can see at the top, if we want our high school students to be writing their own code in Python, then the groundwork for that needed to begin at the younger grades with simpler coding. And one of the first things we started to do is explore Kidoyo. Kidoyo is an infrastructure that has K to 12 programs that build on coding skills, starting with very simple codes like moving objects in directions, moving on to loops, sequencing, debugging, cloning, and by fifth grade, creating your own sprites, backgrounds, and animations. Students would be able to work and move to higher-level courses by the time they get to middle school with a strong foundation from the elementary school, and then be able to tackle more experiences at the high school.
The committee work afforded us the opportunity to assess our existing course offerings and to evaluate new teaching and learning materials and resources. The result is a scope and sequence that is both realistic for next year and aspirational for the future, for the future to meet the needs of our learners who are merely curious about computer science as well as those already dedicated to building upon their CS knowledge.
At the elementary level, most of the legwork for coding began with our stellar program, our enrichment program. The stellar teachers worked to design a scope and sequence, and we launched Kidoyo across all grades, K to five, in January. The students were given credentials and began to their coding challenges. We created benchmarks at every level so that we knew what we wanted the second graders to accomplish, what we wanted the fourth graders to accomplish this year, and like we said, what would that look like in the years going forward, while also providing enrichment opportunities for students who wanted to be challenged way beyond and showed interest and aptitude in coding. Students would receive instruction from their teachers on coding concepts such as looping and algorithm sequencing, and then be able to earn badges through challenges that they accomplished. Mr. Gavin even came to see some of our fifth graders and gave them some challenges to meet certain levels on different coding projects. The students were very engaged, and he even used a community platform, community board, where they could share ideas, share projects, and ask each other for help with certain things. Hey, that was really cool. How'd you do that? And that could all be monitored by our classroom teachers and stellar teachers as well. Our teachers now continue to develop the scope and sequence for next year, lessons, curriculum, and get PD through our partners in Kidoyo.
Since the 2017-2018 school year, Southside High School has offered a semester-long Intro to Coding class, initially taught using Apple's Everyone Can Code curriculum and their Swift language. Needing greater accessibility because of COVID-19, we transitioned to using code.org and JavaScript, adapting their AP Computer Science principal's curriculum to meet our semester needs. Beginning next year, we will be teaching Python on Kidoyo's platform as a full-year course, preparing students to take the APCSP exam. We also hired a new teacher with a strong computer science background to take our programs to the next level and increase course offerings to include APCSA, IB Computer Science, and to continue our committee work exploring more future elective opportunities. I've started working on Kidoyo as well during our committee meetings. I kind of scoffed and chuckled at times about the badges that you could earn. And then I earned my first badge, and I promptly took a screenshot of it and sent it off to Dr. Moriarty. The badges are designed.
How's it going? So essentially, what you're looking at on the screen is Arduino, which is something that we piloted this year for the first time in the middle school in my seventh-grade technology class. It is really hard to explain and almost harder to do, but the kids get it. And once they start to really go with it, it's pretty awesome. It's essentially a microcontroller that allows any kind of digital inputs to create any kind of digital outputs. If you've ever seen, like, I guess the most popular thing to see is like, if you ever see the TikToks or the videos of like the Christmas houses that have the music going on on the radio and then all the crazy lights going on, that's purely Arduino. Like, you can program it to do really anything. So we're not exactly making Christmas house lights yet, but we did get the kids started. The same with the summer program. We've been teaching STEM in summer for, I don't know, probably 10 years now. And we do have a lot of opportunity there. And thanks to Mr. Eckert, it's growing pretty strong there as well. Is there any of the computer science in the high school? Did you want to talk about that?
It just recaps the upcoming classes that I mentioned previously.
So some of our future programs.
Another thing that we're exploring and excited that we might be able to bring to Rockville Center are hackathons. So hackathons are code challenges and competitions. Students would work in teams to show off coding skills and work collaboratively to meet different challenges. This is something we're hoping to bring to Rockville Center in the near future at almost all levels and build upon in the coming years. And we hope to compete either within ourselves or with other school districts also in the future. So that's exciting. Up on the screen right now, we see images from Kidoyo. In the top left, that would be maze code. That would allow students to solve mazes in a variety of different ways and coding mazes using loops and repeats, X and Y axis for the younger kids. On the right-hand side, we have Hatch. Students would create their own sprites, their own backgrounds, and essentially their own video games using Blockly. That's something that we are going to get to by the end of fifth grade and moving into sixth grade. So even right now, this year, even though we launched not for a full year, every fifth grader would have created their own sprite, created their own background, and done some block coding. At the bottom, our more advanced students in the high school will be using Python and typing in their own code in Python and JavaScript to create their own programs. And now we'll listen to what some of the kids have to say about it.
What did you like about Kidoyo?
I liked Kidoyo because they had a sprite editor on it, and I liked making pictures. And it like, I could express how the pictures look. And I feel like it was better for me instead of drawing.
What did you like about using Kidoyo?
Like, there were, on each level, there were like different challenges, and you had to get past them before you got to move on to the different level.
And each level you get, after you complete it, it sends it right to you so then you can get a new badge after you complete the whole thing. And it goes up here.
Hi, I'm Kevin. I'm a 10th grader here at Southside High School, and I take coding class this year. So most impactful thing I learned from taking coding classes, like, how organized everything is, like, makes me more like an organized person. And what excites me about coding is like the way everything works. It's like really cool to like see what you build like at the end. Like, I think coding is useful for me because I plan to use it for college going down the road. And like, I try planning out with my mom, and she tells me like good college choices for computer science, so yeah.
So moving on, we just wanted to discuss a little bit about our robotics program because they're so interrelated. So a lot of the coding skills that kids learn through their computer science classes are translated into robotics. So we've used the Vex program. It started with our middle school and has been built out, both to the elementaries and to the high school. With input from our committee member, Ryan Bockelman, we searched for a robotics program that would be compatible with what was already in place at the middle school and would serve to unite all of our elementary schools by using the same program and would be a conduit to continuing to enhance what we already have at the high school, which has been active since about 2013. Should be noted that most of the elementary robots came from Ed Foundation grants and Teacher Center grants, which we're very grateful for, and we thank them for that. What this slide shows here are the skills that students will develop at each level and how those skills will then be enhanced and built on as they progress through their years. So as we spoke about that cohesion between K through 12, seeing what kids will need as they enter certain levels and trying to methodically organize those skills so that they're prepared for the next levels that they'll see as they progress through the years. So on this slide, you can see the four different Vex programs that are used. At the early elementary level, we use Vex 123. At the upper elementary level, Vex Go. At the middle school, we use Vex IQ. And at the high school level, we use the Vex V5. So that continuity is across the board, which helps our students because they're able to gain familiarity. And I think what you'll see with this, which is really cool, is you'll see the progression from the pictures. You can see early on, age-appropriate. So the kids are working with items that are, you know, that are simpler in nature or appropriate for their usage, and they get all the way to the high school, and they start working with metal products, tools. Those concepts of engineering come in. So there's a real gradual release in terms of making the complexity appropriate for them as they progress through. And knowing that they're using the same program across all 12 years, we're really optimistic for it because we think it'll really prepare them to be as successful as they possibly can as they work through there. And it should be noted that, you know, robotics goes hand-in-hand with coding. All these robots are built by codes that kids do on the backend. So there's this great overlap between computer science and robotics. And what we really liked about the Vex program was that it was really comprehensive in what it offered in terms of curriculum, professional development. So it made it the full package for us to make sure that we were giving kids what they needed for robotics.
And I just want to add that the full launch of Vex in elementary will start next year. We do have some Vex robots that we're piloting in the schools, but we haven't done a full launch of Vex yet. That's coming up next year.
So just some next steps for robotics in our school district. Over the summer, there'll be professional development opportunities for our stellar teachers. We'll look to outline elementary lesson plans that are aligned with the K to five curriculum. We're looking forward to next year. Seventh graders in the middle school will be able to take Vex IQ for a 10-week period. Eighth graders will have the opportunity to take that course as an elective over the full year. And in the high school, we'll continue to offer those experiences for students in our robotics club and those robotics competitions. I think it should be noted too, just to speak a little bit more about the robotics club we have at the high school. It really is way more involved than just maybe a traditional club that what you might come to expect. They meet upwards of three hours a week, and when they approach competitions, they're there even later. And it's great to see because the kids just, they don't want to leave the room. They're there all the time, working with their classmates on tinkering, adjusting, doing all the kinds of engineering skills that we want to see in kids, and it's really a true passion. So it's really a great opportunity for those students that have, you know, kind of seen the robotics through the years to really get to enhance that and compete at a very high level. These competitions are very intense and competitive, and the kids have a great time when they're doing it. So it's really just a really cool opportunity. So the robotics club at the high school is again something that we're really looking forward to continuing to bolster, try to draw more students in as they gain more experience at the lower levels as well. So we do have some more kid testimonials that we'll share.
Okay. What is something that you have enjoyed in robotics?
Um, I enjoy building the robots and coding them to move.
What kind of robotics did you enjoy using?
Um, the Lego robotics.
Okay.
Um, I enjoy, um, like, um, make, like, using the, like, robotics, like Dash and like the, and yeah, and like those people and making them like move and go forward and turn. And I also really like the Lego robotics too.
Mm-hmm. Andrew?
I like using the cublets and figuring out what all the blocks did. And I also like programming the Lego robotics.
Excellent.
Mr. Lamanna and Mr. Beinlich?
So the next phase that we explored was computer-aided design, which might actually be as complicated as computer coding and explain to people. But essentially, the way I explain it to kids is CAD is one of the most fundamental aspects of like our current progression in society, right? Everything we own has to be designed before it's created. And before the onset of computers, that was a really elongated process. Now, we can do things with middle schoolers that probably professionals would do in months, and we can usually do it in days. Computer-aided design, we use OnShape Autodesk Inventor. Really, basically, it's 3D modeling, but on an engineering aspect. Kids explore everything from just how to create shapes or how to manipulate them in 3D to how to build things with tolerance and then to be able to assemble. And then we eventually 3D print CNC, and now we'll be laser cutting straight off of the program. It's professional level. It's really impressive. The kids do some pretty great stuff. As of now, in the middle school, we're exploring opportunities with using TinkerCad, which is a lower program that allows kids to look at just vocabulary, 2D, 3D manipulation, basic shapes, how a work plane works, and just the basics, which would, will be great for us going into the middle school because then they'll be able to, we'll be able to go further because we don't have to go through all that. And that's where they start OnShape. And with that, we can sketch, design, recreate real-life products, reverse engineer. And then the kids are also get pretty quickly into like creating authentic stuff. Yeah.
Hi, David Beinlich. I teach wood design at the high school. I also make hundreds of snowmen.
Thank you. We loved our snowmen. Yes.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Love doing it. At the high school, we're sent up absolutely amazing students from the middle school. The work that they do down there is amazing because they come up as junior engineers. And when they get to the high school level, they get to become engineers. We have a 3D modeling class, wood design class. And in those classes, you're introduced to industry-standard computer-assisted design programs. Also, we have to talk about, I can't speak too well to the music, but we do offer computer-assisted design, sound design in our music classes as well. We use industry-standard programs like Finale, Pro Tools. So all of our students get introduced to this, and they can become proficient in it before they even get to college. Here we go.
New toys.
Yes, these are our new toys. Daniel.
So I know that they're starting to use iPad parts, but it's important to express that we're not replacing the Chromebooks. It's just an additive. Some of the classes benefit greatly from having that iPad.
Yeah, there's some things the iPad can do that the Chromebooks can't. So we're hoping to bring in some iPads into the building, the store, and the media center so that they could be used by classes or by the stellar enrichment program for various different things.
Yeah, awesome. And then we are getting laser cutters next year, which is something we've been hoping for for probably about five years now. It's really exciting. So essentially, with computer-aided design, it's only fun if you make something. That's what we've learned. So it's really important. The 3D printers are fantastic because you can make a lot of cool, creative stuff relatively quickly, but still, the print time takes a while. So the kids, you know, they're waiting, right? And then the CNC is the exact opposite. It cuts really fast, but it takes a lot of prep time. And the beauty of the laser cutter is its fast setup, fast creation, rapid prototyping. It's just, it's a three-headed monster in a FabLab world. If you've ever heard of FabLab, the laser cutter usually is the last one that comes because it is the most expensive, but it does really impressive stuff. And then we're also exploring opportunities in resin printers, which is kind of like the next generation of 3D printing. It allows for higher levels of accuracy, stronger products. Some I said earlier was tolerance, which is the ability for one thing to fit to another correctly. You know, it's something we take for granted. You put a cap on a water bottle, and you never think that how much measurement and precision needed to go into being able to make that cap fit perfectly with water not spilling out. So all things like that. All right. Oh, sure. So as we said earlier, I know that we're looking at how we can implement TinkerCad, which is again is like a beginner-level software. It's designed for elementary school students and lower-middle school. So we're looking to bring that into the elementary schools as well as some of the sixth-grade classes in the middle school. We're looking for different ways to interact. So you want to get into that?
Yes, we're looking for, we have absolutely amazing software. We have amazing labs. And so it's just natural that we take our fine art students, and we start to offer them the opportunity to come in and apply their skills digitally. So that's something that we're looking forward to doing, which is really cool because, you know, if you're going to go to school and become a graphic designer, it's good to have those skills.
Yeah, so we're looking at, me and Mr. Bockelman work very closely as it is, so we're just looking for a new way to work together. So we're going to start collaborating the CAD more with the robotics. We're actually going to design 3D printer parts. That's what's really nice about the laser cutter and the resin printer, that'll bring us to the level where we can actually create robotic parts for the Vex kids so that we can kind of work together. So we'll have our kids design it, and his kids use it, yeah.
In high school, we have an expanding business program. And I create products with my students. Why not create some kind of partnership where we can create a Why not create some kind of partnership where we can create up, create pop up shops and create, you know, ways to sell products? You know, the two disciplines can come together.
So in my class right now, the kids are exploring hydro product farming. We're currently about to produce around fifty crops in a space about a fraction of the size of this room. It's gotten pretty impressive at this point. So now the kids are starting to use the CAD to three D print parts for the hydroponic system. So we're looking at how we can maximize the usage of tools. No, I think that's where you got right, the music tech and the TV production?
Yeah, the music, the music, yeah. Okay, I edited this slide. I just wanted to show off one of my students' work. This is Melanie Corn. She came to me first year, taking the class. And she, her, I said, do you have a problem that we can solve by engineering, you know, a way around it? She said, yeah, when I walk in the house, we have this radiator and we can't put anything in front of it because it warps whatever furniture we put in front of it. So Melanie went, she used CAD, AutoCAD, which is the exact same program you can use to, you know, design, engineer a building. And she used it to create this beautiful shelf that has an opening so that the heat can still escape and the cat can go on top of it. But the coolest part was she had this bottom spot and she didn't know what to do. And then she came up with this idea, what if I make a shoe rack so it dries the shoes in the winter? So she used, yeah, so she used CAD to do this.
Don't be shy. She told him what her brother did.
Oh, her brother made a full sized arcade machine in my class last year. It had like ten thousand games. Became one of the most popular stops for students in periods.
That was CAD, that was coding, that was everything.
That was everything. That was, he actually purchased a Raspberry Pi and programmed the whole thing himself, buttons, everything. It was amazing. That was a great project, too. This same student used this exact program to create a carrot nose for snowmen. And we were able to manufacture two hundred fifty of them using that, and that became part of the project. Okay, we have a student testimonial here.
Hi, my name is Alex Perry. I'm an eleventh grader. Hi, my name is Alex Perry. I'm an eleventh grader in the wood design class, and it's a great class that I enjoy. And what do I do in wood design class? I get to work with my hands and apply concepts from math to be able to use my brain and measure length and then put it on a board. A lot of the skills I use, I learn from class and then apply in wood design. And one of my favorite things is actually using the computers because it allows me to take what I think in my brain and put it on a board and apply that to the project I make. One of my favorite projects overall is last year, I made a wooden bench with a detour sign as the backing. I was able to use the computer to plan out the entire project and then move it over to a CNC machine. I showed me carve out part of the backing and then I put it all together with my hands.
I'd like to begin by just saying that it's been incredible to serve on this committee. As an elementary school teacher, working with our middle school and high school colleagues, look how much you can learn just from sitting in a room with these these teachers. They're incredible. I can only imagine what it must be like to be a student in their room. And we saw, right, that the incredible things that they come up with. It's really incredible. As you could see, great efforts are being taken to support the district's vision for computer science, robotics, computer assisted design programs for our teachers, and most importantly, for our students. To this point, the district has placed a strong emphasis on what it means to be a true professional learning community. We've done so by creating meaningful partnerships with both VEX Robotics and with Kid Oyo. Through these invaluable partnerships, along with the support of the RVC Teacher Center, professional development is being offered to our students to expand their knowledge and expand their methodology and their delivering of best practices. Teachers are now able to take advantage of a new collegial circle framework in which they can explore topics of interest through collaboration, self inquiry, and even authentic strategy implementation. At this time, we have groups of elementary and middle school teachers that are interested in creating collegial circles circles to further enhance their knowledge and best practices related to the Kid Oyo program. On behalf of the Policy Board of the Teacher Center, we look forward to hearing those proposals for next year, and we'll do whatever we can to support them in their endeavors. In addition to collegial circles, which is that self inquiry, professional development, Kid Oyo and VEX both offer their own professional developments as well. Teachers who are involved with Kid Oyo have access to Oyo Pro Passport, which provides access to live online professional development in real time. Teachers have access to archived video content to view and review as many times as they'd like. They can go back to it as much as they, as much as they would like to. They get personalized feedback from top CSC mentors. They can even advance their coding skills with timely project based classes and learning pathways that are individualized and cater to their needs in their class with the students that they work with. In terms of VEX, we are, VEX offers certification classes, which are also online and asynchronous, and really cater to what teachers need. Teachers can choose, you saw all the different VEX kits at the different levels. Whatever kit that you're working with, you can actually have that kit in front of you and work from from your home on a online asynchronous and go through a series of different activities that go with that particular kit. And teachers at the end will take part in a an online certification assessment where they can become certified and in in teaching that actual VEX kit to their students, which is pretty incredible. The hours of those trainings range anywhere from six hours to twenty two hours, depending upon the complexity of the kit. We currently have four elementary teachers that are involved in that right now and one high school teacher who is soon to be receiving her kit and will be taking part in that as well. So we're really looking forward to that, and we want to keep keep that moving in the right direction. But really, it's all about that professional learning community. We have that with our teachers. You see through Kid Oyo and through the kids coming together, it's really a professional learning community for them as well. It's really incredible. So we model that for them, they take the reins and they go with it. So it's incredible. Thank you.
Here we have some more student testimonials as well.
Hi, my name is Tatum Gallagher, and I'm a ninth.
What is something that you have learned in coding, that you enjoyed learning about in coding?
Um, I liked learning about like all the things we did in Kid Oyo and like doing the like, um, conditionals and looping and, yeah, that's it.
Okay. What did you like in coding?
I like doing looping, like, and conditionals, like, if this happens, then do that. I kind of liked having more, like, different outcomes depending on what happens.
Good. I like that answer. What'd you like in coding?
I like what we did on Maze Co where I had, where we had to figure out like how to get to the X. And I like, like the conditionals and the loops.
What was your favorite thing about Kid Oyo?
I like the part where you had to do like math problems to figure out which color goes into which spot in the blocks.
First grader here at Southside High School. For me, the most impactful thing I've learned from coding and robotics classes is a lot of problem solving and like logic skills. These classes have made me generally like more of a thinker and I, yeah, problem solver. And I think for the future, I would like to take more computer classes because, well, they're really fun. It's cool to see what you can create with just your brain and a computer, and the possibilities are like endless with computers.
So Tatum is one of my current students, and the thing that she said that brought me the most joy as a teacher was, I think for the future, I'd like to take more computer classes. Over the previous five years of teaching CS at Southside High School, students like Tatum have asked me, Mr. Gomash, what other computer science classes can I take next year? And I'd have to reply, I'm sorry, none, this is all we offer. Now, because of our educational leadership, the formulation of this committee and its work, I can tell Tatum and her fellow classmates that there are more CS classes to take in their future. So thank you for paying attention to our presentation today, and it was great to deliver. Thank you.
Just a few comments. First and foremost, I was so glad you pointed out the intersection between robotics and CAD. Because that is really when you see everything kind of come together, where the kids on the robotics team are using computer assisted design to print parts that they can use in a robot. So really good job on that. Number two, Mr. Beinlick, are we preparing anything else for the spring? You don't have to announce it, but I just want to know if we're preparing something for the spring.
The new spring, the new spring project starts May eighth, Monday. And we're going to have two hundred and thirty two first graders coming in to build a special project, but should I unveil it now?
You should not unveil it. Let them wait. Let them wait.
Keep the suspense.
So two hundred and thirty two, so that'll be five hundred students that have had the opportunity in kindergarten and first grade to go see what we can do in high school. And we're really excited for that project as well. The other thing that I think is really important, we kicked off this conversation about artificial intelligence, right? And artificial intelligence is something that I'm personally been very focused on as a game changer for not only education, but for economics, for revolution, the possibility of revolutionizing many, many, many different fields. And I was so happy to have the conversation with the high school teachers and recognize the fact that they were thinking about some of the same things. And I think it's really important that as we try to learn how to incorporate these powerful tools, number one, that we have to think about, not only can we do it, but should we do it? That's always really important, should we do it? And then number two, how do we make sure that our students are asking great, great questions? And that's something that our students do really, really, really well. They ask great questions. So if you're going to have this powerful tool, you want to be able to ask great questions. So one of the things we've been talking about is how does that impact our instruction? The second piece that we, that came out of that conversation was really, how do we emphasize what it is to be human? Right? So what are the things that we can do that that machine can't do? So that is really important to me. That is a conversation that we've started here in Southside and I am, and Rockville Center as a whole, and I'm super excited for that. The other piece that I just wanted to touch base on was the partnership aspect of all of this. You heard not only partnerships where we talked about the support from the Ed Foundation, which has truly been amazing over the last few years, but you also, we also heard about partnerships that we've established this year. So Kid Oyo as a, as our coding platform is another, another partnership that we've established. VEX, we've expanded that from the robotics club to now K twelve. So we're really excited about that. And then more importantly, you see that our presenters tonight are an example of a partnership. So not only do we start with our students at kindergarten and go all the way through twelfth grade, but our teachers have established a partnership and a collegial working relationship with administrators on how to make a better experience for kids, period. And this is something that I was super proud to work with the board on establishing as a goal. And then Dr. Moriarty, you and your whole committee just took this and blew this out of the water. So well done. And I'd be happy to take any questions from the board.
Thank you all for being here. This certainly is an area that we've been wanting to see expand for some time, and we're really excited that your passion has come together and your great minds and your work. And Mr. Beinlick, you beat me to it, but I was really excited to see you in the room tonight because I was going to thank you in person for the snowmen project. We all really appreciated that. We're excited to see what's coming in the spring. I echo Mr. Gavin's sentiment in terms of bringing departments together and looking for opportunities, not just for the vertical alignment, but bringing different content areas together. For example, the business department and the finance, fine arts department were mentioned, so I'm really happy to hear that you're looking for those opportunities as well. And thank you very much. I'm excited to see what comes. I wish I could go back and be a student in your classrooms. Any comments or questions from board members?
I'd just like to to echo Mrs. Barry. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you for your presentation. And I really appreciated hearing about the process that was used to craft the scope and sequence. I really appreciate that we had voices K through twelve in the room together, having very nuanced conversation about what this work looks like in kindergarten in the upper elementary grades into middle school and into high school, because I think creating that continuum is so important to the success of a program. So I'm really, really just blown away by the process, and I hope that we'll start to see that same process being used across the other content areas. The only real question I had was related to ChatGPT. I'm, I am curious about what the vision is from the district about this tool and how we might see it utilized in instruction.
Well, there's a couple of different ways you can. So right now, one of the things we were talking about on the high school level, when this tool first emerged, people were just worried about, is this going to write my kid's essay for me? Right? So, but one of the conversations, and that could truly happen. You can write, you can put in questions and they can write an essay for you. And that's not just a question that we have here in high school, but that's a question that they have in college, too. So that was one of the things that we wanted to do was start by raising awareness of what these tools are are able to do. But one of the things that we've talked about, and I've even talked about it with teachers and observations, is, you know, we have to start incentivizing kids, not just for the answers they give for, for the questions they ask. So that's an instructional change that is part of the vision for how we would use artificial intelligence. The second piece that we want to be able to do in terms of artificial intelligence is understand what we do to capitalize on that tool. Meaning, where do we provide value as people on top of a tool that that's there? That's really where the jobs are going to be down the road, is that everyone's going to have this tool in one way, shape or form available to them. The third piece that we talked about was, what does the vision look like when you can have an AI assistant providing kids with more immediate feedback? That's something more future driven. I don't have a specific answer until I see an actual specific tool. But Dr. Walsh, you can, you can jump in at any time. But that was one of the things we talked about. What does it mean for assessment? What does it mean for how we can provide an opportunity to give kids feedback? One of the things you can do is if I tried this with ChatGPT, I took one of my my seniors stats homework, right? And I asked them, I put in my, not only the question, but my answer, and I asked them for what I could do differently to get better, and it gives you an answer. So ChatGPT as it exists now, I had to find out later that it wasn't a hundred percent correct. I asked the stat teacher, but because it blew me away when it came. But that's another thing that we have to be able to try to figure out. How can we use the tool that's going to provide not only feedback, but the right feedback in a timely fashion? So those are the three things that I would say right now, we have to be wary of as educators. You know, what are the tools that are eventually going to be in the kids' hands? How do the kids learn to use them and ask great questions to get the maximum value out of the tool? And then the last piece is, what do we do to separate ourselves from the tool? What are the things that we do to add value? So those are the three pieces that I would say are part of the vision for AI. And I tell you that knowing that, as Dr. Moriarty said before, when we, there was an old Moore's Law about computer power, where it would say every two years, it would, computer power would roughly double. What they're predicting for artificial intelligence at this point is every year it is to the power of ten. That's how fast this thing is going to move. That's how disruptive it's going to be in a number of different ways. So while I can sit here on, in April eighteenth to try to give you what an idea of what the vision is going to be, I don't necessarily know what ten X of ChatGPT really looks like. So I think it's really important for us to start the conversations early and not in a punitive way. We know that the the kids can have the opportunity to use the tools or have access to the tool, so we have to think about what that means for us and what it means for instruction. Maybe there are less take home essays, and we have to change the way we do instruction in the classroom. Because they would be able to say, write me an essay on blah, 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 and their phone will do it. So that's kind of where I'm at. I hope I answered that question for you.
No, you did. Thank you. I I agree that there's a lot of rewards that we can elicit from utilizing this technology, but I think there's also a lot of risk associated with it as well, which is concerning to me. You know, just thinking even about protocols for students using the AI and being uncomfortable or offended by the answers that it gives. Because it is an artificial intelligence and we can't predict what it is going to say. So I think before we had, if there is a rollout of utilizing this in instruction, like intentionally using it, really thinking about what those protocols are and how we're going to protect students in using it. And also in really teaching them, how do we differentiate between what is real and what is not?
That's, well, if you go back to our February presentation on the curriculum changes, one of the curriculum changes I present, I presented not for just this year, but for two years out, is the idea of expanding the theory of knowledge class for anyone that wants to take it. Because after going through, and I've I've been there now five, six times in two, theory of knowledge class, including like one of the last classes this spring, I can tell you that that class offers students a way and a thought process on how to attack that very problem, what is real and what's not. And we know that as we move forward, it's going to get harder to tell what's real and what's not. So that's why I talk about emphasizing what it is to be human a lot when we talk about AI in the context of AI, to skip back to. To skip back to your other question about protocols, that's what we were talking about at the high school. That's what the AI, what do we call them again? The task force?
The task force.
Right, the task force. The AI task force, that's what we were talking about. Because as I told you, we don't know where this, where this is going to go. We know that we have to be involved in a process, but we have to do it in a careful and thoughtful and a deliberate way. That's why not only do we say, can we do it, but should we do it?
Yep, great. Thank you. And thank you all again so much. I really enjoyed the presentation, and good luck with the rollout, and I can't wait to see how it goes.
I can't thank you enough for it as well as a board goal. It's amazing to see how fast you've all put this together and what the collaboration has done. And some of the takeaways that I, I've listened to you speaking, and you're, you're speaking of Tatum, Mr. Gamache, and what Tatum asked about what can happen in the future, what are my options? I'm so enthralled with this. What else can I do? We've heard that from so many parents, too, over the years, and people come to the mic and people writing letters and saying, you know, my son is enthralled with this, but where is he gonna go with it? There's nothing more to do. So, that is beyond exciting for us, because it's something that we brought up as a board goal. And then, the marriage between the disciplines and how you've worked that together, one of the things that came out of the survey that maybe it was a negative, but now it's turned into a positive, from kids was, how does this relate to my life? Why am I learning this? And the best example of that is everything you've just said. You're creating this piece, and this piece works in that robot. Or you're creating this, and we can work with DECA, and we can sell this product and earn money to buy more products and more things that we can use. That's real-world connection, and that's invaluable to kids. So, that to me were the two biggest takeaways from, from what you've done, and I can't thank you enough for everything you've done. It's really impressive.
We have like an all-star task force here. Amazing teachers, amazing things coming home for kids, great lessons. It really, it would be an insult to call them electives, truthfully, because they're using such skills. I've seen some of the programs, the math involved and the engineering and all the thought. What I appreciate, I know Mr. Duffy, you've been there since, you know, families like mine started kindergarten, you come from a long way from dot and dash, which were the original things that kids got their hands on, iPads and movement of robots, and then all of a sudden it's on holiday lists, and everybody wants it for, you know, their presents. But that really does make a difference, this whole K to twelve idea of what we are as a district. We are a K to twelve district, so we are starting this. It's not a high school elective. It's not something you dip, you know, dip your toe into before you go to college. This is a real thought process from day one forward, all the way through. And I appreciate that you have that going and moving at such as the pace that you do. The offerings are amazing. I'm excited about the future. So, when I think about the future, I think of two things, and I, I wonder if the committee has had this conversation or could have this conversation. As a board member, I'd love to know if you've talked about budget forecasting for the future, because while the grants have been incredible to date from Teacher Center, PTAs have done grants for us, Ed Foundation, we all know, is, has been so generous to us. Over the years, as a board member, I know we've been asked, oh, can we put more money into robotics? Can we put more money into DECA? What could you get from us as board members for future forecasting in terms of budget? Because this year, I'm excited, it matches our board goal and what we can do in terms of the expansion that Mr. Gamache is talking about. But I would want you to think about as a committee, not just for this year or the next year, but if you're looking at these programs five years out, and we want to keep cutting-edge technology, and we want to make sure that we're keeping up as much as we can with AI, what would you need from, from a board? So, I would want you to think about that if you haven't. And secondly, how we could do maybe a little bit of education for students in terms of, almost like a career fair, for them to see how these things translate into not just college programs, but into career. Because I think if they can make deliberate decisions about courses that they're taking, you know, we're, we're kind of front-loading them in K to, K to five, say, we're, we're kind of having them, but then when they get to the middle school, they have choices. And so, if they can make deliberate choices that can help them, you know, one of the students talked about his, his parents helping him in terms of course selection, I would also say, let's push it a little further and see what we can educate our students on for career for after, because I think those are things the committee, you have great minds put together, and I think that we can do so much for our students, and I really appreciate everything you've done. And one comment, I don't know who came up with the term hackathon, but I personally love it. Thank you very much for everything you've done, and, you know, I'm looking forward to hearing more. Thank you.
So, at the K to five level, we had a lot of robotics in place, but different schools are doing different things. So, we needed to almost guarantee that everyone would have the same experience, so that, not the same exact experience, but have a lot of the same experiences so that they can go to the middle school all having the same background knowledge. So, when we did, when we decided on VEX, we now know everyone will be using VEX, and we can still use Cublets and Little Bits and Dash and Dot in other places. All that translates, it's the same block code, it's the same concepts, just used with different robotics. And we are putting, that is in the school district budget, at a two-to-one ratio for the VEX robots. That means every two kids, there'll be one robot when they go into class, to the stellar class. And that's the ideal situation. It's even better than one-to-one, because you're working with a partner, which is better than working alone.
And I think, you know, to, to piggyback on that, two things. Number one, hackathon, outstanding, but we are not the first ones to come up with that. So, definitely not. But that is a club that we're going to pursue down the road, so that would be something that we would put into future budgets. I know that the committee worked with Dr. Moriarty in planning all of this, and that starts with the end in mind, right? So, you saw that slide where we talked about what are the goals and what are the outcomes we want for our kids at the end. So, then the committee was able to kind of work backwards and say, what are the skills and dispositions we need at each level to get them to where we want at the end? And that's why the process is such a, a good one when it's vertically integrated. But in terms of budget, for this year, we, we didn't rely on the Ed Foundation for any of the laser cutters or anything else like that. That was something that was built into the budget for this year, based off of recommendations from the teachers. So, when we talked to the committee and we say, what are the things you're looking for? And, you know, Dan's eyes light up, and he says, I'd really, really, you know, think about a laser cutter. And so, then we go and we do the research, you know? Is it something that's feasible? And we want the skills that happened at the middle school to transfer to the high school, so now we're getting two. Okay. So, that's kind of where we are with the budget.
But I think that that just goes, speaks to our teachers, because so many of the grants that were the original way we got funding for some of these things, not all of them, some of them came from budget as well, but started with teachers' ideas about what to write those grants for. So, I just want to compliment the teachers and the administrators, and having foresight from ten years ago more to say, what can we start integrating new to our programs? And again, it just really makes you realize, it's, it's not elective, it's not elective. It's their life skills, their career skills, their, their really, and they're such a good fit for so many of our students. And I know that it gives, builds confidence for our students, and, and that means a lot for, for what you're all doing for the kids. So, thank you so much for all the work. It's, it's amazing, and I loved this presentation. It was great.
I was talking to Mr. Gavin, one of the most exciting things about the Kid Oyo, where the kids who met Mr. Gavin's challenges were not generally kids who thrived in sports or thrived in music or art, but this was a niche for them. And you could see them light up, and you could see other kids coming to them, oh, how did you do that? How did you do this? And you could tell, they were like in their zone, and it was great to see them thrive in that way.
It also cost me a couple t-shirts and some pizza.
Pizza.
Yeah, it cost me a pizza bar, yeah. They shook me down at our rear side, they definitely did, yeah.
I think we just have to reassure parents that a hackathon is not actually teaching our students to hack. It actually means building, right? Making. So, a hackathon is a group of people coming together to build something, make something.
To solve a, a computer-based problem. So, a coding challenge.
Right, to, or to build something and to make something. And so, you, I would say you have hacked this presentation, right? You made it. You rocked it, and it really is a serious investment in the future of, of our students' education. And I think in, you know, when I think about K to twelve education, and certainly as, as the students get towards high school, there's a feeling like we want to provide a broad-based education in the basics, right? Reading, writing, science, math, and maybe, certainly I was, you know, thinking of technology as its own sort of bucket and in, in a separate category. And now we're seeing, and, and Dr. Walsh, you started the presentation by saying this, how it is integrated fully in so many different academic disciplines, whether it's design, art, music. I'm wondering if you're, if you're thinking, if you have high school faculty thinking about ways to incorporate technology into bio or chem or any of the other, you know, basics sort of disciplines that we make sure that we prepare our students for.
Yeah, I could actually speak to that. Some of the grants that we got from the Ed Foundation, again, to go back to with the science research room, we didn't even realize at the time were usable by so many of our IB bio and IB chemistry students for their IAs that they work on. So, we just saw just naturally it overlap in that way. So, I think it, it makes a lot of sense for us to be intentional about trying to get this to be interdisciplinary in nature, because there is so many cross-cutting concepts and skills that are so useful. And that is when the true learning happens, when they take two what they might seem to be isolated concepts, and they bring them together and realize that they're interconnected. I mean, that's really a really great opportunity. So, we'll continue to certainly explore those options for sure.
And then, as you see, like for science research, they not only have to use the, the science technology, but they also have to use data science. So, they also have to really think about the, the way they set up their experiments or the way they set up their projects, the way they use, what tool is the best one to get me the, the best analysis from this? So, there's a lot of pieces with that that are really exciting, and I'm looking forward to continuing to build new courses.
Right. So, you might get a taste of the sort of the tech and the computer science principles in, in one area of your study, and then realize, oh, maybe I, I should take, you know, a different sort of course that's more computer-centered, if I've gotten a taste of it somewhere else. And as they've gotten a taste of it throughout in elementary and middle school, as we're seeing. One of the things that struck me is the sort of balance between the pace of change, as you mentioned, how it's evolving, you know, by the minute. The pace of change with technology sort of up against what's typically a slower pace of change in education, I think is, is a challenge. So, I guess how, how do we make sure that we are building a program that's nimble, that can, it can be nuanced and can grow? And I guess maybe where, where Mr. Gamache was getting to towards the end with the, the Oyo passport, the pro passport, and maybe it's the Teacher Center, but are there ways to make sure that we are flexible and adaptive within the system that we've created?
I, I think to answer that is, the system we made has a built-in reflection piece. And so, just like curriculum, when we set up the curriculum review process, we know that in five years, even though we're looking at English Language Arts right now, we're gonna have to look at it again. Computer science, I think, when I, when we did this original presentation back in the fall, we talked about how we know we're gonna build a scope and sequence that five years may be somewhat irrelevant on different levels. Because as we introduce skills at the elementary level, they come more prepared to the middle school level. So, as they become more prepared for the middle school level, where we think they might be in terms of coding at middle school level in seventh grade, might need to elevate to where the ninth graders current, we project the current ninth graders are. So, that's one of the challenges, as you, you talked about the pace of change. The way we navigate that is by involving really well-intentioned people with vision. And that's what the committee was. They were well-intentioned people with a shared vision about how do we make better experiences for kids? And so, that's how we kind of navigate the pace of change. I mean, I think the first meeting we had, which was in this room, I might have scared them a little bit, but look at what we've done in six months. So, because I was talking about other things that we could go through hackathons and those kinds of things, and just as possibilities. And then, together, we've kind of co-constructed this really cool, not only scope and sequence, but series of courses and opportunities and, and activities for kids that they enjoy and that are, help prepare them for a future.
Right, and there's no chance it's gonna be a boring class, right? Your enthusiasm, your energy certainly translates to the students and the learners, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, items for discussion, policies and superintendent's regulations. Currently at stage one, we have thirty-two-ten visitors to the school. There's just an update to this electronic visitor management system. Did anyone have any comments or questions regarding the update?
Yeah, it seems like we are just bringing the policy in line with, with the procedures that are already happening at the buildings.
Yes.
In terms of showing ID.
Pretty straightforward. If there were questions, of course.
Okay, to move this to stage two?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sixty-one-fifty, alcohol, drugs, and other substances. This is currently at stage one. Any comments or questions?
I had a comment about, I agree with the statement, including prescription drugs for which employee doesn't have a prescription, but I wonder if it just should be prescription drugs, whether or not they have a prescription for it? Because we don't want employees giving out any sort of drug, drugs that they may be prescribed or anything like that. So, I just feel like prescription drugs as a whole.
Well, consumption, we're gonna have to then bifurcate that, because obviously, if someone has a heart medication that they have to take every four hours, we're not going to prohibit them from doing that. Do you want me to recast it? Because we have consumption, and it's about sharing and selling.
I think I was worried about the sharing and the sharing part.
No, no, I hear, I hear what you're saying. It's a good point. I'm saying we bifurcate that to say that you consume prescription drugs that are prescribed for you, as long as it doesn't, you know, impair you, but you shouldn't be sharing or selling your heart medicine with anybody.
That's what I was thinking.
And I also want to suggest that the word doesn't be changed to does not in the, in the policy. I think it should be more formal. Do you want me to recast this and bifurcate it and bring it back next time?
Yes, and we'll leave that at stage one then, until we see the new language. Thank you, Mr. Bernosky.
Good point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Policy sixty-one-fifty-one, drug-free workplace.
I just had a question as to why the actual USC code was taken out. Did it change?
No, we've, throughout this process, we've been eliminating a lot of the detailed citations. I think this described it sufficiently, and, and it could change from time to time, too. The citations could change, et cetera. So, we, throughout this process, have been using more generic terms like the education law, US code, et cetera. But if you like the specificity, that's fine, too.
Well, it's just that the, the first line where it says one through five of section two-oh-two, that's what section two-oh-two is. It's contained in twenty-one USC eight-twelve. Because I went to look it up to make sure the language was appropriate in terms of the drugs that are listed there, because it's, obviously, the drugs aren't listed here. As you say, they change at times.
Right.
But the top part is actually referring to the USC code. So, I don't know why we wouldn't just put the code in, since that's the actual law, rather than referring to a section of that law without mentioning the actual law.
Well, I think Mara in doing this was, you know, trying to be less repetitive and less legalistic, but you're suggesting that we leave in the redline portion and take out sections one through five of section two-oh-two?
Right, because section one through five, section two-oh-two refers to the actual US code. So, it, it makes no sense to have it in there without it explaining what you're talking about, you know?
Okay, so you'd like to edit it to remove one through five of section two-oh-two and reinstate the redlining?
Right, because that's the actual section where it's referred to. If that code changes, then we'd have to update anyway.
Right.
But leaving that first sentence is sort of floating and not referring to an actual law.
Okay, I accept your suggestion.
Thank you. So, we'll also leave this until we see the revision at stage one?
Yes.
Thank you. Currently at stage two, we have twenty-three-ten, attendance by board members at conferences, conventions, and workshops.
Just stylistic editing.
Right, yeah, we had read this at the last meeting. Are we okay to move this one forward to stage three?
Yes.
Policy thirty-two-forty, dissemination of information through students.
Same thing.
Are we okay to move this to stage three?
Yes.
Policy forty-one-ten, administrative personnel. Are we okay to move this?
No revisions.
No revisions.
Yes. And policy forty-two-forty, administrative latitude in the absence of board policy. Okay to move this?
Yes.
Thank you. At stage three, we have policy seventy-one-sixty, assignment of students to elementary schools. We had held this at stage three. To do another reading tonight, any comments or questions? Okay to remove this to approval?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great.
Okay, Mr. Gavin, opportunity for superintendent.
Sure. Last meeting, we discussed the two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars in security upgrades that we reapportioned in the board, in the budget. And I just wanted to talk about the potential hiring of a, a director of security with law enforcement background. We are in the gathering of information stage of this process. We want a person with law enforcement background to work with our current employees, not only on training, but providing best practice from law enforcement, and also making sure that we're coordinating our, our shifts and making sure that events are covered. So, we are currently reaching out to different districts. Mr. Murphy has been reaching out to different districts about how they have employed directors of security, and we've also reached out to a number of our law enforcement contacts as well about the types of things that they recommend. So, I just wanted to follow up. I know we, we spoke about it briefly, and I wanted to provide an update for that. The last thing I want to talk about in my opportunity for student, for superintendent is that the registration for the summer program, or Summer ACE, begins tomorrow at ten AM. Ten AM. I know that every year, from what I've heard, if, if people get closed out of their classes pretty quickly, so I want to, we have, I want to remind the public that we sent out this information prior to the vacation. We sent out another link on Monday, and then that registration goes live tomorrow at ten. The most popular classes fill up quickly, so I'm asking parents, have a couple of different options. If you don't get your first choice, have another different option for your child if, in the event you don't get your first choice. So, I did want to provide that and remind our parents that we've sent out this information. This will be the third time tomorrow, is with, they're actually going to send out a, a link at nine that says it opens up at ten. So, that will be the third time everyone's kind of been pre-warned that the, it opens up for the link at ten. So, please review the course offerings with your child and have a number of different options that you're looking to register for. And that's my opportunity for superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin, for the update on the search for a director of security. I would ask that you update the board and the community also at the next meeting on May third.
Absolutely, yep.
Thank you. Opportunity for board members, Mrs. Messier.
I'd like to start by congratulating all of the students who earned All-National, All-State, All-Easter, and All-County Music, Art, and Writing Honors. We're so proud of your effort and your accomplishments. I'd like to thank Mr. Bartels for his work in crafting this year's budget. Looking at the budget, one can clearly see evidence of our board goals and the district's overall mission entwined into, into the numbers that are presented. The budget is a clear investment by our community in our children's education, and I would encourage all members of our community to come out to vote on May sixteenth at Southside High School from seven AM to nine PM. I'd also like to thank Dr. Moriarty, Dr. Walsh, Mr. Duffy, and the rest of their team for their presentation on computer science, robotics, and CAD. I really appreciated the work that was put into designing a comprehensive K-12 scope and sequence. This will ensure that instruction is scaffolded in a logical and structured manner, which will enable students to gain the skills and knowledge necessary to fully engage in these fields. I'd also like to thank Ms. Love and Mrs. Taylor for their presentation on ICT model, which was present, presented before break, and I apologize for missing that presentation. I sincerely appreciate the time and effort that was put into executing a full-day ICT model at the elementary level, as well as designing a system for ICT at both the middle school and the high school. A full-day ICT K-12 program will afford our students access to a more inclusive and effective learning environment. I'd like to thank district administration for reviewing their policies on the region's review classes. I appreciate that these classes are now being offered for free, and moving forward, I hope that these classes will remain free of charge for all students. Finally, I hope that everyone had a relaxing spring break, and for those who celebrated, a belated Happy Easter and Happy Pesa. For those community members who are currently celebrating Ramadan, Eid Mubarak. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Farazani?
I too wanted to congratulate our very talented musicians, vocalists, artists, and writers. You continue to make the district proud, and I think, as Dr. Zora pointed out, the fact that these kids have not been performing together in a public place for two years just enhances how well they've done and been able to accomplish so much, having just gone back to actually performing again. So, I'm very proud of them. I'm also very glad to hear that the region's review policy was reviewed and that there will be no cost to all students. It's an important step in ensuring equal access to this much-needed service. The varying times and days of the course offerings will provide options for our kids as they struggle to schedule around their sports and other school activities. So, I really appreciate that that was looked into again. Thank you, Dr. Moriarty, for the presentation tonight. I've already said what I was going to say about that, I'm not going to belabor it, but it really is amazing, and it shows how much you focused on our board goal, which is, I appreciate very much. And as usual, thank you to Mr. Bartels for your presentation, and the fact that we had the money in the budget to do these capital projects. And the best way I can think of to explain it to people is, you know, if you're a homeowner and your roof is leaking, you've made it. So, we had money in a fund that we could handle that without a bond, and it's a really important thing to be able to keep the roof from leaking when you own a school or a strict or home. Thanks. And that's it.
Thank you. Mrs. Hackett?
Congratulations to our art and music students. Such a large talent pool in our district, and we're so proud of everything that they've done. The IB art show was fantastic, and I know we've had some amazing all-district concerts recently, and we have many more coming up. We have our spring musical coming up, Center Stage is still coming up. So, we have lots of things that will still happen toward the end of the year, which is exciting. The science fair is at the high school tomorrow night, if anybody wants to come out and see what our science students are doing. I wanted to, wait, we didn't have an opportunity at the last time to speak, but I wanted to congratulate Marina Ayanu for winning the twenty-twenty-three Long Island Water Quality Challenge, who was awarded our Outstanding Achievement Award and a grant for twenty-five-hundred dollars for the high school. So, just another example of great things that our students are doing at all levels here. I also wanted to congratulate all of our athletes that were at our last meeting as well, and just really compliment that this district has something literally for everybody, as we saw tonight through the robotics and computer science presentation. We had heroes at work at, in our district this week. I just wanted to thank Mr. Scalisi and the head custodian at Watson, Ray. They were on-site at Watson doing some work and noticed that somebody had a medical emergency, and they're both firemen, and jumped into action. I just want to say thank you to them publicly. We have great, great people that work in this district. They're doing great things above and beyond what we expect of them, and I think it made a real big difference in somebody's life this week. So, I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Scalisi and to Ray for their hard work. We have our mental health. I wanted to just give a shout to our wellness walk, which is coming up on May twelv-, uh, thirteenth, which is a Saturday at the high school. I believe it's eleven to one, correct, Mrs. Love?
Ten to twelve.
Ten to twelve, ten to twelve, and it was two hours. But I hope everybody will come out for it. We, we do focus so much on mental health in our district, and we've put so much effort into making sure that our students feel safe and confident and healthy here. A lot of work's gone into it. Mrs. Love's done a great job leading that charge, so we hope that our students and our families will come out that day. I believe we are, we are shine-only, correct?
Correct.
All right, so if it rains, unfortunately, we would not be able to have it. So, we're hoping for shine. And I wanted to say thank you to Mrs. Love for that. Of course, Mr. Bartels, you're always our MVP this time of the year. It's a lot of work. You've done a great job. The budget's really a great kind of marriage of our foundation, our philosophies, and our history, but it just brings us to the future. So, I really appreciate that. Dr. Moriarty has done amazing work presenting all the different curricular changes this year, so thank you for that. And of course, to our leader, Mr. Gavin, always a pleasure working with you. I hope to continue working with you in the future. I am just, I know it's, it's that time of year where we start talking about future, and I really would love to be part of the future here. So, thanks for everything you've done for us. The past has been amazing, and the future is very bright for Rockwell Center students. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Downing?
Thank you. I join my colleagues in congratulating our students who were honored tonight for their success in art and music and writing. Talent is always a big part of the story, but it's also putting in the hard work and practicing and building the skills. All of that leads to success, and so we celebrate all of you tonight. Thank you for the update on computer science and robotics. It's so important to prepare our students for that ever-changing future that we discussed, and to build those skills again of logic and problem-solving. That will take us into a future where technology is used responsibly and ethically, and I'd like that we're focusing on that with our students from a young age. And I'm very excited that we are focusing here on our board meetings on these topics of topic of teaching and learning, because teaching and learning is what drives the budget. So, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Bartels, as well. Thanks also to the Ed Foundation, which we have mentioned a few times tonight, for a terrific gala on April first, raises so much money that goes directly back into our schools, benefits our students who are in these buildings at this moment, and it provides for the extras that we cannot put into the school budget, but that do so much to enrich our students' experiences in academics. Thank you also to Ms. Padone of the High School Counseling Center and to the Sandell Center for the Intergenerational Sharing Conference. It was such a great day of bringing together our senior citizens and our high school students to sort of bridge that gap between the generations. Clearly a fun day for all generations, and I love the stories that came out of it with seniors sharing their wisdom and teaching students in a way that was out of the classroom, but in many ways just as important. And so, on that note of teaching and learning, congratulations to all those being inducted into the high school honor societies this week, and for those presenting at the science fair tomorrow night as well. Break a leg to all of our performers in the upcoming spring musicals. We're all cheering you on, and I can't wait for opening night at the high school next week and the middle school the week after that. I want to just encourage parents to attend the Secondary Parent University next week as well. Thank you to all of those who are involved, who are helping to educate our parents and families in all of the great things that this district has to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations again to our art and music students, and thank you very much, Mr. Bartels, for crafting this budget. It's a budget that I fully support and am proud of in the work that we've done this year. And at Mrs. Farazani's point, it's work that you've been doing for a really long time to put us in this position, so it's very much appreciated. And good luck. It's hard to believe we're in the home stretch of the school year. Good luck to all of our students in their upcoming exams, both the three-through-eight state testing, and believe it or not, our first IB exam is next Friday, I believe. So, good luck to our students sitting for them. Okay, opportunity for visitors. The public in its comments is requested to refrain from making any direct references to students or staff members that could be considered critical of their performance or their character. Such references to individual students or staff members are inappropriate in a public forum and should be instead conducted in private conversation with appropriate members of the staff. Please remember, you are addressing the board as a whole and not any individual board member. Please remember to keep your comments to three minutes. Please state your name and address when you come to the mic.
At last month's meeting, I asked the board to address the problem of gender identity indoctrination going on in this school district. I outlined how I had tried to get straight answers about why a lesson plan for ten-year-olds included gender identity, and how the Project Veritas videos were evidence that activist teachers in Nassau are pushing this agenda. This administration then allowed Women's History Month at the high school to be hijacked by more gender identity activism. For five days in a row, in the name of Trans Day of Visibility on March thirty-first, the morning news program after the Pledge of Allegiance was used to propagandize students with the belief that men who identify as women are in fact women. Men of little note or achievement other than the fact that they identify as women were celebrated as women for Women's History Month while excluding actual women of huge achievement. Only by day three of the campaign, as complaints rolled in, did someone see fit to mention a woman, Marie Curie. It was an afterthought thrown in to cover up the spectacle of erasing women in Women's History Month. Objective truth and common sense was ignored in favor of blatant discrimination and indoctrination of a fiction that men calling themselves trans women are women. Also ignored was March twelfth, which is International Detransition Awareness Day, when thousands of trans people publicized their regret about the harm they've done to themselves by permanently damaging their bodies with puberty blockers, hormones, and surgeries. Many of them were children when they did this, encouraged by adults who failed to protect them. In the interest of balance and the safety and health of children, why wasn't this side of the debate presented? People who try to debate it are told it's all about kindness and inclusion. Mantras like "safe scene, heard, loved, and respected" are recited while ignoring that the propaganda is divisive, discriminatory, and disrespectful to women, and frankly, anyone who values fairness and objective truth. The GSA staff member who kick-started the campaign phrased it as an effort to support safe schools for everybody. Ironically, one of the men featured was an MMA fighter who boasted on Twitter about how much he enjoyed fracturing a woman's skull and how much he loves smacking up turfs who talk transphobic nonsense. These labels, like "transphobe," "bigger," and "turf," are frequently used to smear people who disagree with this ideology, particularly women who are even now being physically attacked for saying they feel unsafe in their bathrooms, locker rooms, and that their competitive sports are being destroyed by men taking their places.
Mrs. Cooney, you're almost at three minutes.
Okay, I'm done. Common sense has to prevail. Anti-bullying policies are in place to keep all kids safe, including trans kids. Please stop the activism in our schools.
Could anyone else like to come up to the mic? Okay. Election of board trustees of BOSI's and approval of BOSI's proposed administrative operations budget. Can I have a motion to approve the Nassau BOSI's proposed administrative operations budget for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year, as well as the election of Nassau BOSI's trustees?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the receipt of financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve items for action, numbers one through five?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?